Can we go back in the session? We met in executive session addressing personnel issues. No decisions were made. Does either of the commissioners have any comments?
Yes, I move that we give notice of termination to our county administrator for neglecting her duties prescribed to her in the West Virginia State Code.
Is there a second? Is there a second? No second. We'll go ahead to the next issue. That's Rick McDowell and Ryan Jefferson, Left Fork Water Project. We do apologize, you all have to wait a little longer.
I don't think I can read that.
I want to give you a quick update on finances for the current round that we're in. This is a copy of the most recent sheet. You know, we get our money reimbursed to us back from the D E P. You can see that out of the almost $760,000 that was budgeted, we're down to 180 that we haven't spent. And of that 180, 104 is already tied up in contracts. So there's not a whole lot of money left. My thought is maybe we'll have enough money to do one more system, one extra system. But we probably won't know that until the end of April. Any questions on any of the details from this? Be happy to... Okay, all righty. And here is reason we didn't appear last time. We went to the speed exception. So that's the materials that we share with that state legislation. Don't relax, anything more, read the board on that.
That was quick, Rick. Next, on the agenda is Sharon Salmon's resignation as coordinator of the McCorkle Outreach Center.
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is it an all yes?
Yes.
Next is a, I need a motion to award a bid for the work on the outside of the courthouse. Any thoughts of the commissioners before we go?
Judy said, what she thought would be Williamson for Bubbling County, but then her second one was Trisco's with the alternate three.
Who's that Trisco?
They are Lima, Ohio.
And there was one that didn't, did they submit a supplement or anything where they didn't cover the windows and stuff like that, or the roof or something like that? It was the cheapest one, but they didn't really bid on everything we needed them to do. Is that clear?
Yeah, Williamson was the cheapest with the, they didn't submit anything extra. No.
Williamson's $40,000 high, but they had done good work for us in the courthouse upstairs, made courtroom up there. I personally, from that point of view, from their workability and being in county, I'd ask the commissioners to consider.
So we have a motion by Commissioner McCann. Is there a second? That motion to approve Williamson Construction.
A second.
Is that an all yes vote? The next action we have here is to re-advertise the bids for CPA in the Huntington and Charleston newspapers.
Motion.
Motion of Mr. McCann, Commissioner McCann.
A second.
Second of Commissioner Matthews. Is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
To move on to new business, I need a motion to approve the bills submitted for payment. I move.
Second.
All yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, I need a motion to approve the appointments. Was there something?
This is the question.
Yes.
Yes. We have one, we have one issue here on a will that has been submitted to Daryl's office. It's my understanding that Mr. Stevens is here this evening to ask us to have a hearing on that.
That's correct. I can, I can come on forward here next. I think all the commissioners are figured, I mean, it's Carlos, I think you're all familiar with Dickie, and I think you all probably where he passed recently, and I'm here representing his daughter Betty tonight, and we're just asking, basically, there's been a motion to, there's been a will that's been given to the commission, and I guess it's on the agenda tonight to be probated and requested. We obviously are here and have filed notice, and Betty just recently found out that a will was actually in existence when she was told about it, and she immediately, or as soon as she could come and see me, she came and saw me. I was actually on vacation Monday and Tuesday, but she came and saw me Wednesday, and I've filed the paperwork that we're intending on filing a contest of this will. And I think under the code, I think as the commission's probably aware, there's two ways that wheels are probated, and one is the way you all normally do it, if somebody submits it for you all just vote, and then it's done. It's just an ex parte proceeding, and that's what we set for tonight. And there's another way, if somebody wants to contest the will under 41510, then it's, it needs to be set for a hearing, or as I would request tonight, on its face, the court just denied the probate. I think if you look, and if you look at the will, which you probably have copies in front of you, the second, the first page, which purports to be a will, and then there's a second page attached, which doesn't even appear to be on its face, a, an original copy. It appears only to be a secondary, something that somebody's cut and pasted or attached there, but it appears there is no original signature from Mr. Hodge on this will, and we think on its face it's invalid. And so number one, we would request that the commission just outright not accept that will and refuse it. And obviously pursuant to that, we would further request if the court denies the will to be probated, I think that on its face, that would mean that the county commission would need to go ahead and remove, to go ahead and remove Janice Lovejoy as administrator. She's applied and been appointed, but her only means to be appointed is based on this will, because she is not a blood relative, and they weren't married, so she's not one of the people under the statute who would be able to apply in the first 30 days. My client, Ms. Hodge, would be applying if the court removes her and doesn't allow this will to stand. But either way, I think under the statute, once somebody requests for a contest or for a hearing to have it done, basically, it's called in solemn form, where you have to actually bring in and have the witnesses to solve this down and all that, we would request if the court's going to deny our motion, just to absolutely refuse the will, that we set it for that. At least for this time being, we suspend any ability of Ms. Lovejoy to do anything. It's my understanding, and this is really, in my experience, is rather unusual, she's already filed an appraisement here today, which again leads us to be somewhat suspect of things that are going on. We'd ask that you suspend any further action in that will and any ability of her to do anything in that estate until we can have a final hearing. But again, I think if the commissioners look at the will and look at the second page, and that the signature page is clearly not an original signature, I just don't see any way this will should be accepted for probate, and that would be our first motion. Obviously, if you're all not of a mind to do that, we understand, and we respect your all's opinion, but we then obviously think we're absolutely entitled to a full hearing on this issue, and we would ask that the court go ahead and set that. So with that, I'll leave it to you all.
Question, Dickie.
Yes, sir.
You may stay with that. This lady came in, did she come in too early, not being a relative?
Right. She is, she's applied because she's named, if you look in the will, it does name her as the primary executor. But it's my understanding, her and Mr. Hodge, they did have a relationship, but they had never gotten married, and under the statute, she's not one of the people that would be entitled, if this will doesn't stand or is not approved, that removes her standing to be somebody that's appointed as an executor based on the fact that she has no relation. That's, if you look at the statute, that goes down to people that have a blood relation. And she's not one of those people under the statute.
Yeah, my question was, did she apply in the right time period and everything, and she should have, if she's not a blood relative?
If she's, if she's not a blood relative, and there wasn't a will naming her as the executor, she absolutely would not be able to do it. You have to wait, if, the general thing, if somebody comes in and if nobody moves to be in, lots of times, nobody wants to be in the administrative of the state, it's all for a thankless job, and nobody will come in during the first 30 days, and then after that, it's opened up to anybody. And that would be our position, since this will's invalid, that she would fall in that other class, but clearly, I think in this case, I know that there are family members who would step in and ask to be named as administrator probably tomorrow if this will's refused, so.
But it seems like, is our decision to first decide if there is a will of validity?
Well, I mean, number one, you all, again, it's obviously, in your all's discretion, you can on your face, look at it and say, this just doesn't qualify, or you can say, we don't know, and we want to have a further hearing on it, and then you could set it for hearing when we bring in the witnesses. Ms. Lovejoy could, she could retain counsel, or there's a means in the code where you actually file an affidavit and so forth to have the will then probated in solemn form, which is again something where you actually bring in the witnesses and attempt to prove that this is actually a valid will. And so again, that...
Do you have to do this, actually?
Yeah, that'd be mine, you know, I know you all, Mr. Matthews had, I'm sure you all have been at least in a few of them, and they don't come up a lot, because I remember in the 16 years I was prosecuted, I don't remember a lot of times, and those were generally, I think there was one or two times you all asked me to come to commission meetings because they were being held. So it'd be my guess, it's not an issue that comes up a lot, but I think the code, if you read it, is pretty clear that at a minimum, we're entitled to a hearing on this thing in solemn form.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever had a will that could not produce a true handwriting, if not a copy. It may not have been the proper signature, but it was at least original.
This actually came up so quick, I actually attempted to, and you'll notice, even though it's, again, doesn't appear to be in original form, the will is notarized by a lady, and I attempted actually all day today to contact her. I called, her address is at St. Albans, and while I have what it appears to be, I actually went on to Secretary of State's office, and the address that's on her seal there is still her address, at least to the Secretary of State's office. I called around, even called information, and they do not have her listed in St. Albans under any, so I wasn't able to contact her. If there's a hearing, I guess, a subpoena or so forth could be issued to that address, and I assume it's still valid, I really don't know. So I have made some attempts today to do some further investigation, but just was unsuccessful. I wanted to inquire of her if she knew anything about this will. She actually did see it, notarized it. I just was unsuccessful based on time constraints, really.
So I think...
Yeah, well, I would say we probably want to go ahead and set up a hearing for this, and if it's a will of the commission, and get both sides notified what's going on, so they can, you know, either produce evidence that it's a true will or not. To me, that'd be the best way to proceed. So is there a motion to do that?
I'll move. Yeah, ask one more.
Okay, sure.
Should we not also maybe consider setting aside what's happened up to this point, the amount of money?
Yeah, well, we could do that in a separate motion, maybe, to do that, if that's okay. We'll go ahead and...
I'll second.
You move?
I'll second.
A second, that's an all yes, I'm setting up a meeting, a hearing. But then, if it's a will of the commission, I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and set aside what's been done so far that we get to a decision on.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So we've done so. Anything else, Mr. Matthews?
No, again, I know this is short notice, and I apologize, we just, again, it just came up so quick, and obviously, you know, it's an emotional issue for everybody involved, and I thank you for hearing me tonight, and we certainly appreciate the attention you all gave to it.
And just for my information, council, will your office get ahold of the clerk's office and work out the...
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll also, I will attempt to get ahold of Ms. Lovejoy, too, and I assume there'll be an order generated from this hearing, and we'll get, maybe I'll, you know, I can attempt to call, and obviously, she would have the right to retain counsel. I don't know, and I don't know what her will would be in relation to that, I just don't know this lady. I obviously know Betty from working with her a long time up here and otherwise, so again, I will attempt to coordinate, and I guess we'll attempt to coordinate a hearing to get this done, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Could I have a motion to approve the appointments, wills, and saddles submitted by Daryl Baker Clerk, with the exception of the case we just had?
I'll move.
A second.
Is it an all yes? I need a motion to approve the appointments done in vacation of Lincoln County Commission as submitted by Daryl Baker Clerk.
Motion.
Second.
Oh, yes?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the budget for the fiscal year 2014.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second. I do like to ask...
You have to come up.
Yeah, that we have a session looking at this on the amount of money it's going to take to balance the budget. I'm just pretty concerned when it comes to spending other people's money, and I just think that previously, $400,000, $500,000, we've always been able to carry forward to balance the budget. This year, in order to balance the budget, due to mostly, you know, new things that's been added, it's going to take around $900,000 to balance the budget. Now I just think that we shouldn't do that without really seriously making sure that we know that we're going to have to be tight in management for the rest of the spring, and trying to save all the money we can in order to come up to that other $300,000.
So what would you, would you want another session, or would you want, how would you want to...
Well, if we vote to approve the budget as submitted, then we can't really change it unless the State Tax Department wants to change it.
Well, okay, so...
I don't think, I guess, you know, I still a little bit concerned that, you know, we can make it next year, it's next, the following year. If you spend all you got now, you don't have anything. Next time, we'll be as foot and tappin', we can have some carryover. Well, if we got it all figured out how we're going to spend it this year, we don't carry over a year or two, and that's just, that's just me.
Well, I mean, that's a concern. Having worked with you on these for several years, I know that that's, you know, basically the hurt you've had every year.
And we do have oil and gas that's not as well as it should be, our revenue, coal services is down, too, and our local taxes is down some $100,000 in real taxes, I mean. And so with that, I mean, it's hard to say, well, spend more than you've ever spent, knowing you've got less coming in. And that's just the concern I have. It's a good budget, and it does a lot of good things, but I do think it's, if you're looking at it in a two-year period, it's far beyond what we can afford, in my personal opinion. But I'll support whatever we need to do, but I just know that we're going to have to be belt-tightening in order to make it happen.
Well, I think, you know, I'm kind of that way, too. I think that we can look at this as we go through it and see exactly, you know, what kind of impact it has, and what kind of incomes we have in the future. Commissioner Matthews likes numbers, so we'll have him watch those really close and go from there. Did we have a, did you second this motion?
Yes.
Is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the inter-office budget revision as requested by Daryl Baker County Clerk as follows, transferring $2,000 from retirement to materials and supplies.
I'll move.
Second.
All yes?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the inter-office budget revision as requested by April Roach, extension agent as follows, transferring 41 cents from WZU Extension travel line item to materials and supplies.
She's already started second.
Judy said it may have to go to a dollar, but they didn't want to do that.
Let's approve up to a dollar, then, if you're all right.
Motion.
Second.
I'm glad she watches after this stuff.
Yes.
Next, I need a motion to approve payment to Matt Beckett for $629.43 in reference to Chad Chairman, our home incarceration officer, backing into Matt Beckett's personal vehicle.
I assume that's going to be our deductible, or a thousand.
It's a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Next, I need a motion to approve $2,500 donation for the Relay for Life Committee.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All yes?
All yes.
The next items for declaring a surplus property, we don't have a list of that, so we'll just hold off until we get a list to deal with that.
Table it.
Yeah, do you have a motion to table?
Move to table.
Second.
All yes?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is to dismiss the appointment of C. Joseph Stevens as judiciary commissioner for the estate of Jennings Ferguson.
I'll move.
A second.
An all yes?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone, well, let's see, we want to, I want to, we want to get this out to public, we're having public hearings for the Lower Mud River Water and the Francis Creek Water Systems on April the 4th and 18th, 2013, at 5:30 PM. And I think those are immediately preceding our meetings, aren't they? So anyone in those areas that want to have input into that, or welcome to come by. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak that's not on the agenda? Give me one.
I'd like to know about, Mr. Matthews want to comment on that motion that he made a while ago. You want to elaborate on that?
I believe the motion was to terminate, for basically, if I can reread it. To give notice of termination to the county administrator for neglect of your duties prescribed by the West Virginia State Code. That's what the motion was.
And you want to elaborate on that?
That's, that's what I said, and I don't feel like that I need to elaborate on.
Well, for a person to be employed for 27 years in a place, you just up the firing somebody and don't give them no, don't give them no cause, you know, I just...
I think I actually put that on there.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, the cause was in there, that was the last part of it.
Is that cause, is it going to be made public?
Well, it's in the West Virginia State Code. I mean, it's the duties of an administrator for the county commission.
And she's not done her duties, is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, prescribed by the West Virginia State Code.
Okay. Is there anyone else? If not, we'll go on to commission concerns. I did want to make comment that about Commissioner Duncan passing, Paul Duncan, he's a, I think he's had two terms on the commission, I think he's a disfamiliar commission. I knew him and his family very well, and I'm sure he'll be missed by those around him. He is, I run around a lot more with his younger brother, Timmy, playing ball than I did Paul, but they were all really good boys, and he's going to be missed. The, I want to bring up, I met with Jerry Lawson and Greg Ellis the other day concerning the establishment of a senior citizens center at Pleasant View. They tried to get this done a few years ago, they talked with several of the local churches for support, there were five different churches supporting it, several different people. I've asked after meeting with them, they have talked with Alice Tomlin at LCOC about it, and what we are planning on doing is getting the information together as far as potential costs and things like that, and I've talked with the other commissioners about us getting together with those people involved, and with Senator Kirkendall and Senator Stallings after the session, and meeting with them and see if we could make this a reality over there. They have a lot of older people that can actually walk to that center from where they're planning on locating it, which is important as you get older, because a lot of people need to have people taking places, and that's why I brought my wife to my hearing, as I get old, I get distracted. But I do, I do think it's something that we ought to look into, and what we plan on doing is, once we get the, they get their information together, and I talk with the people at the Harts Senior Citizens Center and things like that, the commission will meet with them, probably at LCOC and the elected officials, and see what we can do about getting that project started, or if it's a doable thing. I told them I felt their laws, and that they're probably, the monies that we would go for for that would be those from the lottery proceeds to senior citizens and things like that, and any other way that they finance building these senior citizens centers. I have talked with the people at Harts, we're still trying to set up a meeting for the Ferelsburg Community Center, but I've told them that we wanted to address the potential for using the Old Hearts High School as far as moving the community center there and possibly adding services there, including potentially a library at Harts. We're still trying to get together on that, but I want to try to get that board much more involved in that decision, and in trying to get back on board as far as the services that, or potentially, I would like to see that board more diverse, and get new ideas on the services that people might need there and things of that nature. So we're in the process of doing that, I'm working with Mr. Atkins, and I've talked with Howard Farley about it, who's going to go on the board up there, and I think there's several other people really interested in getting on that, but I wanted to get that community involved in what we're going to do with, if we do wind up being able to get the Old Hearts High School to develop further. It seems to me like that's the way everybody wants to go up there.
Did you get a call from them?
Oh, did you? We're good, good, good. We're going places because we have a way back for them, so, but that is something that I'm working on right now. We are getting letters back from our elected officials concerning the letters of support that I requested for cellular coverage in the county. Once we get all those back, then we, Alan and I'll get together, and we'll go talk to some people about getting that coverage that we need here, and then, and I'm hopeful that we're going to. I will make a comment concerning personnel. I've been in several meetings with Mr. Gayheart, and talked with the other commissioners. We intend to do, there are some things we have already agreed upon, there are some things we have not. We have agreed upon the fact that we need to circulate our personnel policy to all employees, have them review that, and sign that they have reviewed that personnel policy, so they know exactly what's in that document. I've also talked with Josh Brumfield, who has developed an excellent tool, I think, for documenting overtime, comp time, things of that nature, and I plan on getting that document along with working with the other commissioners, and trying to resolve the problems that we have with the amount of comp time that we're seeing, and overtime, and how we apply those, and how we can, how we, how people go about getting comp time. Because one of the problems we've run into, I think, is that there wasn't a documented way of getting comp time, and there is supposed to be, according to state code. There's several steps you go through to get that, and those have to be in a written form, that have to be in the employee's files, and in the particular offices that they work. And we are going to work with Judge Hope in implementing those things, so we are, we are, the problems that we've encountered, we are addressing them, and I think we're in a good way as far as getting to, having our people know what the laws are, and what the policy is, and let them be able to conform to that. And that goes with not only our employees, but with our elected officials, too. As you come into office, you don't all-time see personnel policy and things like that. It was one of the first things I saw, the judge felt it was that important that I see that and review that policy. And that's when I asked Mr. Matthews to look at particular things as far as from the budget end. I really don't, you know, I think that the way I look at things, I try to go forward as best I can when I can go forward. There's some times you have to wait to go forward, and there's some things we are waiting on to go forward on, but those things that we can address now, we are addressing them, and, you know, as soon as we have resolution to problems, then the public will be made known of what the resolution was, what the problem was, and things of that nature. But I think anytime you deal with personnel, it's premature to be talking about what goes on till you have a resolution of the particular problem that you have. And that's basically my stance on those type of things. I'm not trying to speak for the other commissioners just myself, but I have been in contact with the prosecuting attorney on these matters. I conveyed the results of those talks with the, to the other commissioners, and as I said, we're moving forward on those things that we can now. We look to move forward... We look to move forward on other things in the future as we identify them as problems or as we can resolve them. That's all, Mr. Matthews.
I did attend the EDA meeting, it was a pretty good meeting, I think one of the things that the EDA was basically trying to emphasize, trying to do was actually to get advertisements, so I think we're going to learn ways to get advertisements. And I believe, if I'm correct, if I remember correctly, it was establishing a needs assessment. I think Gary could, Gary was there. So actually, the needs assessment that we reviewed was several years old, it was very dated, and we have, it was dated back, I believe, to the census before the licenses. And that's one of the things that I think the EDA, I think that they want to address. And I think you've addressed personnel, so I'm finished.
I will comment as far as, just comments about the EDA and Gary, you know, I think it's an important area that you guys, we're looking at changing scope a little bit as far as we want to be much more interactive with Hatfield McCoy and the people that are trying to develop that area over there and things like that, and I'd look for the EDA to have a much more involvement in that and working with that. I think it, I think it's, when you look at the potential, it only makes sense that your EDA be the one that directs that potential. So, you know, I expect you guys to be a welcome, a welcome addition to the Hatfield McCoy group because they're looking forward to working with the EDA, and I've already talked with them about as far as what we felt was needed over there, so I'm sure they'll look forward to working with you all, and I appreciate Charles' help on that.
Just two quick things, Kristy Lemble and Bruce Hager, two Dugal people, have been working with me since we had a dedication before for one of the people in their class, a graduate from Dugal, a soldier that got killed in Vietnam. Well, they have, are in the process of having another ceremony for two other students and deceased soldiers, and it was their student comrades there at school, and they just felt like they wanted to do something else. So they had asked me to let the public basically know, the commission, that they will be having a program, May the eighteenth, but I'll have more information coming up on that and flyers and things like that, but basically, it's just going to be a program to honor those fallen soldiers and to pay some honor to their families. And the other thing is, I did get a call late from Trish Lucas, our superintendent of school. We had been trying to get ahold of her, called two or three times, and finally, she did get back to me and basically said that the position of the school board was basically what we had heard through the media, that the school board has decided to option off three parcels or school buildings that we planned to do, to build at Harts High. And basically, on the Harts High, she said they had, the school board had decided to retain the ball field and those buildings that's on that side of the road of the ball field, and sell the high school building as itself, including the gymnasium and locker rooms. They want to release all that parcel of property there. I asked her, did they have a set minimum bid, and she said that had not been established yet, but they did have a clause in there to reject any and all bills. So she wanted me to convey that information to the commission that it would be coming up for an option, and certainly wanted us to, if we were interested to, wanted to look at anything, let her know, make arrangements to go visit before you, whatever.
They said it laid on you.
She said she did not have it laid on you, but they will be, I'm sure. But anyway, and she did, I asked her about the Ferlsberg crop that we're occupying now, and we basically have a deed to that property, to, as long as we want to have a community center there, we can. And if we stop having it, and the school system needs it back, they can take that. I said, do you have any interest in it? She said, not really. Said, we may want to, she had checked with her board, but we may want to actually take it back and carry on selling it back to you guys, but we really don't want it if you all want it. So as we talk in the meeting we have out in the Harts area about the community center, that will be something that we need to talk about, is there a use for it, do we want to keep it, those kind of things.
What was the thing with the railroad being, was there some problem with the railroad, or what was it we was looking at at that time, they have some kind of a-
Yes, the marquee out in front actually sits on railroad property, they own back there, and they let the school board have so much of their property and fence it in for playground, but actually, the line comes back past behind where that marquee is. And I did check one other thing, and I know everybody's tired of it, I did ask Bertie Gandy if she could get me information on what it would cost on the Harts High School just for water, electric, and gas, and basically, rough figures, fifty-six hundred dollars for water, thirty-four thousand for electric, and twenty thousand for gas, around, close to sixty thousand dollars a year for operation. That's not sewer, that's not garbage, I mean, they got just those three things, that helps us as we look at it. That's all I have.
Talk, the auction, auction is Monday, April fifteenth, ten a.m.
And we're at?
At the county office.
Hearing nothing else, is there anyone else that has anything they need to add? Hearing nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to recess this session of Lincoln County Commission at this, at the time of eight forty-five near that, until April sixteenth, 2013, that, are we going to be here at 5:30 that day?
That's the day of the one public auction, it's not April.
There's two of those days that we're here.
No, that's, this is a Tuesday, so I don't think, yes, the third Tuesday of the month, so no, we shouldn't have anything else there.
Oh, April sixteenth is our next day? This is just to recess because of the budget, and is that why we're doing that this way, or is it something else?
That's, yes, recess because what we did tonight is prudent of the budget based on those tax things, and this is basically put it out to the public, anybody wants to examine those, and we come back on the sixteenth to finals to say on them, so we're just-
What time you going to go? Six o'clock, six o'clock, okay, to six o'clock. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Second, okay. We stand adjourned.